On Monday, September 27, 2021. I hereby call this meeting of the Board of Education of the Nerdonia Hills City School District to order. This is a typical meeting of the Nerdonia Hills City School District Board of Education. It is a meeting in public, but not as public meeting. The public is invited to watch the proceedings of the board. There will be an opportunity for public participation in the open forum section of the meeting a little bit later. If you are uncomfortable with open forum, comments and questions may always be submitted to the board and administration through email and phone call. I apologize for the delay. Mr. Brown, please call it all.
Mr. Bussie, here. Mr. Larmour.
Here.
Ms. Matlin.
Here.
Mrs. McKinley.
Here.
Mrs. Strong.
Here.
All board members present?
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in peace, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, can we get a motion for the approval of tonight's agenda? Technical difficulties. Okay, hold on. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Brown?
Mr. Bussie.
Yes.
Mr. Larmour.
Yes.
Ms. Matlin.
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley.
Yes.
Mrs. Strong.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. All right, we have one item in communications tonight, and that is Karen Byers is here to talk about our annual Fill the Bus campaign where we typically collect thousands and thousands of pounds of food for the Emergency Assistance Center. Karen, thanks so much for being here.
Thank you very much. I feel kind of funny way behind you, but I'm sure you can hear me pretty good. Hi, I'm Karen Byers. I'm the president of the Building Boosters of Nerdonia Hills, and I'm also vice president of the High School PTSA. The Nerdonia Hills High School PTSA, along with Building Boosters of Nerdonia Hills, will be hosting the seventh annual Fill the Bus campaign to benefit the Emergency Assistance Center. We ask for the community's help to help us fill a bus with non-perishable, unexpired food items. Many people rely on the assistance provided by this agency for their basic food needs. Please consider participating in this very important food drive. In the first year of this food drive, we collected only 350 pounds of non-perishable food items. That was our foundation year, the year to learn what worked and what didn't work. Collections in 2020 were 14,600 pounds. Over the first six years of this annual campaign, we have aided in the collection of over 64,000 pounds of non-perishable food items. I'd say this campaign has impacted the community in a very positive way. The Twinsburg City School District has agreed to join us again in this endeavor and will work to fill a school bus with donations from their students, their schools, and the community. Collection bins will be placed at the schools in both districts from October 11 of 2021 through October 22 of 2021. We only have two weeks this year because the Emergency Assistance Center is low on staff, and the building that they're in, they normally would use the unleased portion of it, but the building is leased out, so they don't have anywhere to put the extra as they're going for those extra two weeks also. But we know we can still meet those numbers this year, even with it only being for two weeks. In addition to the collection bins that will be in each of the school buildings, the following businesses will also host community drop-off sites. In Nerdonia Hills, we have the Nerdonia Ministerium, Macedonia's Dreher Physical Therapy, the Goddard School and Kinder Care, both in Macedonia, Macedonia's United Methodist Church, the Nerdonia Hills branch of the Akron Summit County Library, and the Nerdonia Hills Rotary. And additionally, the Macedonia Parks and Recreation will be sponsoring events to collect items during October. In Twinsburg, you can make donations at the Twinsburg Public Library, the Goddard School in Twinsburg, and the Twinsburg Ministerium. Students, staff, and people from the two communities are asked to leave unexpired, non-perishable food items in any of the collection bins in any of these locations. Both Nerdonia and Twinsburg will collect the donations from their respective buildings and fill their respective buses. The Nerdonia Football Team will deliver and unload the Nerdonia bus at the Emergency Assistance Center on Saturday, October 23. The Twinsburg Football Team will deliver and unload their bus as well. Please help us to fill these buses and make a positive difference in the lives of people right here in our own community. Thank you very much.
All right, the next agenda item is open forum. Although the public has the right to attend board meetings, it has no inherent right to participate in the deliberations of the board without its consent. Speakers may offer such objective criticisms of the school operations and programs as concern them, but in public session, the board has the right to request that complaints about school personnel or against any person connected with the school system be directed to the appropriate administrator. The board asks anyone wishing to participate in open forum to please sign the log. I don't know where that is tonight. It's at the podium, so please sign in if you want to come up and speak. Is there anyone who would like to come up and speak? No?
Sorry. I just wanted to briefly touch on the SEL that's been going around. Talk about it. I'm Sabrina Pines. I have a ninth grader and an eighth grader. I just, if you guys could at any point elaborate on the program we have, I know at one of the last meetings, Dr. Clark had mentioned, we just needed like a better vocabulary for the SEL we have. I know that in the budget, it's a lot of money to go towards a new program. I do know there are things at the high school and some other places that can use some extra funds if maybe you could look at just adjusting the program we have, making it better than spending almost a half a million dollars on a new program. That's all I wanted to bring up.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening? Someone coming up?
Okay, my name is Mike Esposito. I live at 8457 Eaton Drive. I just wanted to thank you for making hard decisions here. They aren't necessarily popular decisions, but they're the right ones. I know people shout you down, abuse you, say things like that, but the most important thing to me as a parent is keeping my kids in school. Regardless of political persuasion, regardless of feeling about masks and things like that, whether you think they work or they don't, we know that under the regulations for quarantine, having them means less kids get sent home. It's just that simple. So I want to thank you for doing what wasn't popular. And now, if you look at what's going on, the vast majority of districts have had to turn the page and go to where you let us begin. So thank you for that. I also want to let you know, I want to apologize for not being more engaged because we have a referendum on this board and our superintendent that is scary because, you know, when people don't participate, things happen, and then they're going, oh my God, what has happened? And I'm one of them. I didn't sign up to run or anything like that. Maybe I'll make that mistake again, but I want to say that it's very dangerous. I spoke passionately about the levy when it was on here. I stood up and I told people, by way of background, I'm an attorney. I do labor relations and collective bargaining for public entities. One thing I know is a good value in a public system. We had a city, a township, a school district, and that's what we got here. This district does more with less money than any other district. And I came from Sugarman Falls. We never met a levy. We didn't pass. The reason that you're seeing public government have to come to the taxpayers for money is because of what happened with the state of Ohio about eight or nine years ago in the case of Resonance. He took all of the local government funds and redistributed through the state sales tax that used to get passed down, and he pulled them back to balance the state's rainy day budget. Hence, all the levies that had to be put on from municipal and township government. Many of my clients just got crucified with respect to our tax base and our property taxes. Once we pass a levy, it never adjusts. So your township, your home can go up hundreds of thousands of dollars in appreciation, but revenue stream is still the same. But what happens? The costs for things go up, so we have to come back periodically to renew these levies. And everybody says, well, they're not spending right. They're not spending right. No, it's because it's broken economically. Why shouldn't the value of a levy increase proportionally with value of property? Ask the state of Ohio. But that's why we're here, not because people don't spend money correctly, not because they don't do their due diligence, and certainly not because of not with the leadership of Joe Clark as the superintendent. When you go to the ballot box, please remember that there are candidates on the board or for the board seats who talk about never again on tax increases. You get what you pay for, folks. It's just that simple. I bargained for Youngstown. I had cops making $28,000, $29,000 a year for that job. And we have to increase it to $20 an hour, or 22, $23, you have to pay for what you're getting because the labor market has changed. It's that simple. And with respect to, I'm going to say one last and closing thing about all the rhetoric about freedom and things like that, I mean, I would hope that what we are teaching our children is we, not me, us, not I. This egocentric approach where people tear down, tear down good leadership by mocking them. Whoever it was, the coward who put flyers on the windshield at that football game.
So that's your five minutes. That's your five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Paul Distino. I live at 8461 Redwood Court. I have two boys, one here at the school and one at Ledview. As I'm speaking, I have four points tonight, and I'm asking the audience behind me if they believe in this, if they believe in positivity, I ask them to stand. Four points. I'm a principal. I've been a principal for 16 years in a previous district. The first two weeks, the first two weeks of my year, I was allowed to walk my building without a mask, and I was happy. I was about choice. I followed the rules. I did what the government told me to do or asked me to do for 18 weeks, 18 months, excuse me. Something happened within that two weeks, though. 75% of my parents said their kids were going to be masked in my building. The reality was 20% were. The other thing happened. The rules changed with the county. If a kid was masked, they stay in school. My son missed 14 days last year here in Nerdonia because he was quarantined. When kids are out of school, they lose instruction. So yeah, I was happy. It was choice. I had to do a 180, no doubt about it. Secondly, this malarkey that we can't teach social-emotional learning in schools is smoke and mirrors, ladies and gentlemen. Why can't we talk about, one sec, why can't we talk about perseverance, grit, metacognition, empathy, something that we all need in this community? Third, how dare we as adults treat this administration like garbage? I got a letter in my mailbox about Joe Clark, the clown show. He's not the clown. The person who wrote that letter is the clown. Let me be clear. Let me be clear. This guy, this man and his staff, they're superstars. And let me be clear as an educator, what person in their bright mind would want to stay here being treated the way they're being treated? He's written his book. He can go wherever he wants. He is a highly thought-out individual. And let me, I'm not talking his real book. I'm talking, he's written his legacy. Let me be clear. I'm talking. He will go wherever he wants because districts will take him. And let me say this, what great leader, mind you, we don't have many great leaders, will want to come to a district that's broken? You're not going to get the best and the brightest. This will no longer be a destination district. This will be a stepping stone district for someone who can't get a job to make mistakes and then move on. And then finally, I'm sure there's staff behind me right now who've dealt with this for 18 months, and we're creating more chaos for them, more distractions because we as a community, a community, something in common, can't get it together. Ladies and gentlemen, I submit to you tonight, this has to stop. This is a great community with great kids, and we are not being role models for our students. Enough is enough. Who stands in positivity with me tonight? Thank you so much.
Anyone else like to speak this evening?
In the interest of time, I'll fill this up when I'm done. It's my understanding you get five minutes per topic for the board policy. So the first topic I just wanted to mention, for those of you that don't know, this is a little bit of bragging as a dad who's involved with our marching band program, but our marching band is featuring something we're pretty sure has never been done by a band ever in the history of marching bands this year, and that is using individual lights that the kids are wearing that are coordinated to the music and choreographed. And it would be unbelievably awesome if, many of you have come, and I'm not trying to say people aren't showing up. There are people showing up, but if you haven't come to a football game or even a band competition, we have several band competitions, it would be really cool for you to show up, see it, and when you see it, to give a really nice vocal round of applause using your voice as well as your hands. The kids can't hear necessarily hear clapping when they're playing instruments, but they can definitely hear when the crowd responds. And just as a little side note, I know, you know, people don't think about this and, you know, I'm biased, but they also hear a quiet portion of the song when there's lots of people talking really loud in the stands. I know it's halftime. I get it. I've done it myself, but maybe just tamp down the conversation a little bit, listen a little bit more, and show those kids support. For those of you who don't know, if you're in marching band, your season starts in mid-June where you rehearse for four hours a day, five days a week, and then starting in the first week of July, you rehearse from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. five days a week, and then you go to band camp for a week, and then once school starts, you rehearse on Monday and Thursday evenings as well as in class during the day. I've played sports as an athlete at Nerdonia and other places, and there are sports I play where I didn't practice that much. So, you know, it truly is a sport in music. So that's my first topic. So appreciate the time. Thank you. The other topic, I prepared some notes here so I get this right, but it's come to my attention that the board discussed in closed executive session today a four-year contract extension for certain administrative positions in our school district. The topic at hand tonight isn't whether or not these employees deserve the extension. They generally do a really darn good job, just, you know, some of the comments that gentleman before me said. What is at hand is the reckless and ridiculous decision made by those of the board members that will vote to support this. So let me explain. What's the rationale for renewing these contracts early? There's absolutely nothing that says we have to do that. I feel, I think there's a lot of people that are here and not here, that the community is owed an explanation long before you vote on that. So I'm going to continue talking, but I'm asking you to table that until you offer up a detailed explanation to the community. So in the future here, you're going to put a levy on the ballot next year for a massive amount of money to replace or remodel buildings. Now, wouldn't it make sense to be extra transparent with the people that voted you onto the board and for those that will vote to support your levies? I mean, you don't want to upset them, right? What the board is about to do violates ethics and trust in the community, and it sends a clear message to the incoming board members and the community that you're not willing to work with them. So let me explain why. The current contracts are not up until August of 2022. A four-year extension would take them to the year 2026. So first, contracts are a performance-based form of employment. If the contract is shorter, it generally motivates the employee to perform at a higher level for fear of not being renewed. This is obviously in the best interest of our community, but especially in the best interest of our students. Next, the term of the incoming, soon-to-be-elected Board of Education members wouldn't start until early 2022, and their term would expire before the end of these contracts in 2026 if they're extended. This means that the newly-elected board would have no say over who their business director is, who their curriculum director is, who their principals are, and so forth. It's almost like our current leaders are worried that they won't have the majority that they had hoped, so they're trying to jam through as much of, as many protections as they possibly can before it's too late. But wait, it gets worse. We're currently, we currently don't have a budget for these positions past 2025. That's when the board will need to come back to the community for at least a renewal levy, if not an additional larger levy that many of us would like to see passed. Why would anyone in their right mind make such a poor fiscal decision as to tie our school district to something financially that we can't even budget for today unless there are ulterior motives around protecting power and influence? Mr. Larmour, you're a respected CPA in our community, and I voted for you. If you support these extensions, extensions, shouldn't the community question your judgment not only as the Board of Education president, but as an accountant providing fiscally sound advice? It seems like an agree to subdue the power to me. Mr. Larmour, Ms. McKinley, you support these early extensions, I'm told. This especially impacts negatively on the community's confidence in re-electing you both when it's your turn. It also sends a message on how you vote tonight as to whether or not you're willing to work with the newly-elected board or not. I strongly encourage the board to vote against or at least table this until you can communicate to the community why you want to do these contract extensions or renewals or whatever you call them until you're required to do so in 2022. And I didn't say, for the record, my name is Jason Roberts. I'm in Macedonia. I have two children in the school district. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak this evening?
Hi, how's everybody tonight? Good? Great, wonderful. My name is Jill Pittis, and I will also sign the book to not waste any time. And I'm coming to you tonight because what I just witnessed from just the handful of speakers that just spoke was half the room clapped for Jason and the other half of the room clapped for their people. Did everybody else notice that? Okay, well, most, I think it was pretty apparent that it was, yes, I think everybody clapped for the band. We can all clap for the band. They're wonderful. But I'm just going to actually quote you, Dr. Clark, if I can, from a commencement ceremony that I attended of yours a few years back, and you gave the graduates three pieces of advice, and they were to be disruptive, to write your own story, and to be kind. And this is quoting you. Books aren't written about those that blindly follow the crowd. Rosa Parks, Nelson Mandela, Susan B. Anthony, rule breakers, all of them. All of them had the courage to ask, why can't things be different? Why must things be the way they've always been? And all of them had the courage to disobey and to change the world. So when half of a room comes at some people, and I'm not saying that one side of the room is better than the other side of the room, but everyone, I think, in this room wants what's best for our kids. I think that's the bottom line. We all want what's best for our kids. So I just, I know that it's never, we're not coming together on the issue of masks. We're not coming together on the issues of critical race theory. It's just not going to happen. But I think that it's, you have to respect that we have, we're trying here. We're trying. We're advocating for our kids. I'm up here standing for my kids. If my kids were in elementary school, I think I would be fighting a little bit harder, but they're in high school, and God bless the high school for, you know, being a little bit disruptive with the kids and allowing them a little bit of freedom. So I just want you to take that into consideration when we're looked at as the bad guys and we get the police called on us and, you know, all these other things that were taken a little bit above the line. So you come up here with someone that did that flyer, and I know that the people that I speak with, nobody knows who did that. That's not something that anyone in this room, I don't think, condones or we agree with or we even think. All we want to do is be heard and have our opinion heard. And quite honestly, I want my kids to be able to breathe at school. I think we had, we had one case maybe at Northfield, one case, and this was the surge. 19 at the high school, that's the surge. 113 cases. Okay, I will, because you know what? I will ask them. That's the first thing that I'm going to ask. But I'm just saying that this surge that was why we had to wear a mask, we have 39, I'm sorry, 40 kids out of 3,600 kids, that's 0.01% of our population that has tested positive. And my last question, and then I'm done. Okay, if you want to say it's because of the mask, that's fine. Because let me tell you this, if your kids are like my kids, they're touching that mask 800 times a day, they eat lunch, then they put that same mask back on, they go out to recess, they put that same mask on because that's sanitary. Anyways, next question, and then I'm done. I'm just very curious if we are, as a district, are keeping track of the healthy kids that we are quarantining? How many of them are then in turn testing positive? Because I think that would be something worthwhile since we're sending home healthy kids that are showing no symptoms, but because they ate lunch where Mr. Bussie's sitting next to Mrs. Strong, they can't go to school for 10 days. But they can go to the football game and sit like these two. That's no problem at all. So that's just, I was just curious if we are doing anything with the quarantined kids, if we're keeping track if they are testing positive. And I know I said one thing, one more. And if we're ever going to revisit this issue or when we are going to revisit this issue, like what do we, what numbers do we need to be at? Because clearly, Northfield was at one student, so do we need to be at zero students? And for the maskers, I'm fine with the maskers. I respect you. If you want to wear a mask, I respect you. I would never tell you not to wear a mask, but you shouldn't have to tell my kid to put a mask on. And my kid has had COVID, so.
Ma'am. Ma'am, that's your five minutes.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate your time, and I do appreciate what you do for the community. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
They eat lunch, then they put that same mask back on. They go out to recess, they put that same mask on because that's sanitary. Anyways, next question, and then I'm done. I'm just very curious if we are, as a district, are keeping track of the healthy kids that we are quarantining. How many of them are then in turn testing positive? Because I think that would be something worthwhile, since we're sending home healthy kids that are showing no symptoms, but because they ate lunch where Mr. Bussy's sitting next to Mrs. Strong, they can't go to school for 10 days. But they can go to the football game and sit like these two. That's no problem at all. So that's just, I was just curious if we are doing anything with the quarantine kids, if we're keeping track if they are testing positive. And I know I said one thing, one more. And if we're ever going to revisit this issue, or when we are going to revisit this issue, like what do we, what numbers do we need to be at? Because clearly, Northfield was at one student, so do we need to be at zero students? And for the maskers, I'm fine with the maskers. I respect you. If you want to wear a mask, I respect you. I would never tell you not to wear a mask, but you shouldn't have to tell my kid to put a mask on. And my kid has had COVID, so.
Ma'am, ma'am, that's your five minutes.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate your time, and I do appreciate what you do for the community. Thank you all very much.
Would anyone else like to speak this evening?
So this is the thing. Everybody that's for masks or against masks, I get it. But I walked around at the football game, and I saw some people sitting here that are against masks. Their kids sharing drinks out of a bottle with other kids. Their kids eating from the food of other kids. So how is that okay to be outside doing that? But when you're sitting in a classroom three feet away, you have to wear a mask. So you're all saying all this to Jill, but think about it. And watch your own kids at the football games and watch them walk around drinking, I, I, a cone of ice at the Twinsburg game. I saw a group of ten, about 10 kids passing the spoon around with the cup. So I'm just saying, you know, but, but I'm just saying, but they have to sit and wear a mask. I don't think they're going to talk about masks because I feel it should be optional. I'm just saying, if it means that much to you, talk to your kids about what they do outside of school or outside of their house. I, I'm just, I'm just saying, because I've watched them drink out of the same cup, drink out of the same bottle, eat off the same plate. Let's think about it. I mean, honestly, that's all.
All right, would anyone else like to speak this evening? Nope. All right, we'll move on to committee reports.
Sorry, Mr. Lamraff's hoping to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I thought someone else wanted to as well, so I, I was waiting. I'll be brief. I'll, I'll sign that in a moment. Chan Green, 8093 Old Eight Road, three children in the district. I do believe that mask wearing should be a choice, as I spoke about the last meeting. No doubt, as I said as well, you guys never, in a million years, thought you'd have to make decisions such as that. I do believe that, in my heart of hearts, that it is out of the safety of the children, and we're all for that. So that I give an A. However, the communication in the middle of July, or excuse me, lack of communication in the middle of July, I give an F. And that's why so many parents are upset. I do realize after the fact, after the meeting of the 19th, and even after educating myself in the meeting of the 30th in August, about the quarantine regulations passed by Ohio Department, excuse me, Ohio Health Department, and of course endorsed by the governor. Those two were pretty early on, if I'm not mistaken, in July. Parents were not aware that the state did that. And that should have been communicated to the parents. Would have caused a lot less grief. You may not even have had a protest the last meeting, because masks should be a choice. And lastly, I'll close. At the meeting, I asked that the board reconsider the mandate. I have not heard anything about that publicly, and I still ask the same question, similar to Sabrina. When will this be reevaluated, excuse me, reevaluated, and what metrics will be used to reevaluate it? Lastly, Dr. Clark, we share an email communication. And I mentioned in the email about the events of the 30th, and that you, Dr. Clark, had mentioned in the news that there of course needs to be healing within the district. How does that process start? And I don't just ask the board, I ask everyone in the room tonight. But it would be helpful if the board would come together and provide some suggestions for the human process start. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Doug Mastower. Live in Macedonia, have three graduates from Nordonia District off thriving and doing well out in the real world now. I'll sign this when I'm done. Just a couple of quick thoughts. I didn't come here to get in the middle of any kind of mask debate. Came here to support the community, support the schools, support the school board. But I do hear a couple of things that made me, I just want to remind people about. There was a gentleman here that talked about his experience in another school district and said that they went into the year with the option of letting kids wear masks. And I think he said something like they expected 75% and only 20% did, and now they're having all kinds of fallout from that. So I think that the argument you made before about why do kids go to the ballgame and drink from other kids' drinks and sit two feet from each other, I think you just answered the question right there. If you make it optional, kids aren't going to wear their masks. So the mandate makes sense. The mandate works. And the fact is that if we can reduce the chance of someone getting COVID by even 5%, to me, that's worth it. Maybe it's not perfect. I know it's not perfect, but if it's 75% perfect, that's a heck of a lot better than 0% perfect. So I support the mask, but I also understand that people, intelligent people can disagree. So, you know, to the extent that you've asked for what we can do to heal, I think it really does come down to understanding and respecting that intelligent people can disagree. Respect each other and continue to show support for the community. Thank you.
All right, let's try this again. Is there anyone else who would like to get up and speak this evening?
Hi, I'm going to wait to sign the book after I have quite a bit of a long story. So I was diagnosed with a hearing loss at the age of about six years old. I have never had any struggles academically with keeping up until the mask came. A big part of my life with my hearing loss has been reading lips and really focusing on facial expressions. And when I don't pick something up, I read the lips and I put context clues together. In a masked classroom, sitting six feet away from all of the students, I have no friends to communicate with. I cannot hear the teacher standing up at the top of the classroom, even sitting in the front seat, especially with that mouth covered. We've tried the clear masks, and not everybody wears them. I have asked for help from so many people, and it has gotten to the point where I can't even do a full year of senior classes because the school is not willing to accommodate for the fact that I can't get all of the information in the classroom. I am only in two classes in my senior year. I had big, big plans my junior year. I set myself into AP CCP classes, honors classes. And with the masks, I had to drop down to the basic level classes in every single class, dropping some of the grades even because of how bad they were. I want to know how, what, what can we do? Because not everybody's wearing the masks. Not every. I would like to be able to talk to my friends in the hallways. I would like to be able to communicate with my teachers normally, and I don't know what it's going to take to get there. And I don't want to be sent home because I'm pulling my mask down to have a conversation with a friend because I can't hear that, sitting two feet away from them with that mask on. But nobody is willing to take the mask off and teach me, and so now in my senior year, I am down to two classes. I have no idea what I'm going to do with the rest of my life and in college. I was not set up for success in any way, shape, or form, and it doesn't seem like anybody is taking the credit for that. It is all being put on me, and I feel like I have advocated for myself beyond what is possible at this point. And I'm just looking for some help, some recognition that the masks are hurting some people. Not only in the school aspect, but in the social aspect. I lost half of my friends. I didn't even know if I was going to be able to ride the bus to my senior soccer games because of the masks. I need some help. Like, I don't know. Tell me what, like, what in the perfect scenario? What is it that I can do? Because I feel so trapped and helpless because all of these adults are just, I feel like they're not hearing me. I feel unheard. I feel almost ignored at this point because I've had some teachers flat-out ignore accommodations. I just, I don't know. I was just not set up for success. I have no idea where I'm going in my life now. And I feel like I put as much effort and time and everything into it, and it broke me down all because of these masks. I can't have a conversation with a friend sitting in class. I can't speak to somebody walking in the hallways anymore. I used to be able to walk with people to classes. I have to put my head down because I will not be able to hear what anybody is saying in that hallway.
Is there anyone else who would still like to speak this evening?
Hi, my name is Joe Hope. I'll sign the book afterwards, too, on Old Eight Road. I actually pulled four children out of the district because of the COVID problem. And I, 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 I don't know what to say, you guys. I know you didn't sign up for this job. This is not what you anticipated running for school board. And it's a hard decision to make, but I've heard people in this community now say about following, you know, the gentleman before Jason said, like about following the rules, and look where this got us. We've divided our community that was not divided eighteen months, two years ago. When I pulled my kids out, the school that my three boys are going to in Medina, the private school, they made masks optional the whole time and had no problem with COVID the entire time. Simple as that. If you want to wear a mask, wear a mask. If you don't want to, I don't see why that's a big problem. The masks work. They should work when you're wearing it, and I'm not. If you, when I hear people who are educators talk about community versus freedom, I'm sorry, I find it very hard to believe in America. We literally are talking about communism, where you take the greater good of the whole over your individual choice. People think, please, people that are opting out of this and choosing to make masks optional or not have them required, they're not getting sick. I encourage you to drive 45 minutes any direction other than north and find hit the lake then. But look at school buses. I own a piece of property in Southern Ohio. And I go down there, I see school buses with bus drivers not wearing them, the masks, kids not wearing them. They simply don't care down there. Kids have a little different mindset down there, but if it's, if science is science, it should be repeated over and over again. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Aiden Diesel. I'll wait to sign the paper until after I'm done. I prepared something for this night that I would like to share with the board. I'm a senior here at Nordonia High School, and there are a few concerning things I would like to bring to the attention of the board. First of all, I would like to show some images that are being promoted and used in our learning and our supposed education. If you go to the Nordonia Hills City School website, click on Families and go under the LGBTQ Resources section, you will find some troubling articles that do far less than educate, but do, do more to create division and hatred among not only the students themselves, but teachers as well. If you look under the gender pronouns section, you will see a link, www.mypronouns.com, which I will read a direct quote from that states, "Often, people make assumptions about the gender of another person based on the person's appearance or name. These assumptions are not always correct, and the act of making an assumption, even if correct, sends a, sends a potentially harmful message that people have to look a certain way to demonstrate the gender that they are or not. Using someone's correct personal pronouns is a way to respect them and creating an inclusive environment, just as using a person's name can be a way to respect them," end quote. While some people may use and accept these pronouns in the way in which the article lists, others don't, and that's okay. But lots of families don't choose to use these far-left ideologies because they have chosen to raise their children in biology and should not be told that their words or opinions can be harmful because they don't believe in many vast, ever-changing ideologies that are not backed by science or reason. What I believe is more harmful is confusing kids that may otherwise never even think of these issues with all sorts of conflicting ideas. This in fact creates a less inclusive environment because it makes the majority of students conform their beliefs in the ways in which they feel to make others feel accepted and happy, which is not the job of the school to force on students or families. This particular article goes on to say, "It can be offensive or harassing to guess someone's pronouns and refer to them using those pronouns if that is not how the person wants to be known, or worse, actively choosing to ignore the pronouns someone has stated they go by, could imply the oppressive notion that intersex, trans, gender, non-binary, and gender non-conforming people do not or should not exist," end quote. This in effect creates division by implying that if you don't throw your entire year of ninth grade biology out the window to accept how everybody else feels, that for some reason because of this, you don't believe people that disagree with you should exist. This is completely not the case and an unfair statement to make. It is also probably why people take offense to words so much more because they are told to in these ideology-based articles that are aimed to target and confuse the younger generations. This is only a minor issue when you are beaten down the throat by communist and socialist teachers who can't tell the truth to save their lives, spending more time on gender politics or being social justice warriors other than just teaching the curriculum they are paid to do. You saw this all last year when students dropped, A students dropped all across the board because they were spending far less time on actual work and education. I won't say the name of the teacher, but last year, there was a picture from a Zoom meeting that was going around the school with the teacher openly displaying a hammer and sickle painting, which is the exact symbol for communism. The same teacher has a flag in her room hanging that says, "In this house, we believe black lives matter, women's rights are humans' rights, no human is illegal, science is true, magic's wild, kindness is awesome." Now, in your house, you may believe these things, but it has no place in school because in my house, we believe in freedom of speech, the Second Amendment, all men and women are created equal, law and order, all lives matter, and we stand for our anthem. And finally, I want to talk about the mask situation that has completely taken over the school. And what I mean is that kids are being sent to the principal's office for politely refusing to wear a mask, and in some instances, one that I have found myself in, I was told that if I did not wear a mask, I would be separated during a group test, which in effect could change students' grades just for sticking up for their beliefs. In a place that preaches equality and humans' rights, shouldn't it be up to the parents and the students how they treat a sickness their child may or may not even have?
Well, I wasn't planning to speak tonight, but you're right. Bob Schaefer, just want to go over a few things. First thing was barriers to education. Fifth, 12th grade survey. I don't think it has any business being in fifth grade. I, I went over it with my daughter and I said, you know, it's optional. If you want to take it, you can take it. If you don't, and I started reading the stuff to her and she was like, no. So I asked her if, last week, when they took the thing, did you take the survey? She's like, no, I was only one in my class that did. And I was like, cool. You know, didn't, didn't cave into the peer pressure. And this other kid's like, man, those questions seem like we were in high school. And she told a kid, well, I didn't have, you know, you didn't have to take it. He's like, what? What do you mean you didn't have to take it? So I'm saying is communicate with your kids. It was, and what I would really like to know is in that barriers to education, is there anything on there about, is there a teacher that's in the district that makes you not want to come to school and basically give up? Because that's exactly what happened to my son in 11th grade. I was, here, I was sticking up for the teacher, but things are coming out now where exactly what he was telling me was going on. I could not believe that he's telling me, oh, I wish I was a girl because he loves all the girls. And I'm thinking, oh, that's just a bad attitude, you know? But here, he was telling me the truth. And even when it's so far as to record what this guy said, and I'm not mentioning any names, but you don't have to be an expert to figure out who this is. And it's, that's the problem. And, you know, I know behind me, we got a union meeting going on here. So I'm a fellow, I'm a fellow union person. So I mean, I've seen people I haven't seen, but I've heard people get hit in the head in the crowbar on the way out there. So I get it. But this is my plea to you, okay? If there's a bad teacher in the district, don't stand up for him, okay? My dad taught in Cleveland for thirty-five years. My mom taught in public school for a long time. I, I thought about it, but the real reason I didn't go in was there wasn't any money in teaching. And that's a good reason not to go in. Because it's a far more rewarding career than whatever money you make. And here's the thing. I looked in the audience and I saw my daughter's fourth grade teacher last year, Mr. Cohen. I hate to single you out, but this is, this is my point. We talk about it's for the kids, for the kids. Well, as long as you let the old timers bully you around, young teachers, that's the way it's going to be. The Clea, if, if Nordonia paid Cleveland Browns employees, we would be paying Case Keenum a lot more than we'd be paying Baker Mayfield. Okay? Because that's the way it is. You get paid to stick around, you don't get paid to perform. And I'm here to tell you that with the experience, I was a little nervous having a first-year teacher last year. But I'll tell you what, he's excellent, okay? And he's making less than half of a lot of people that have mailed it in years ago, okay? And there's no excuse for that. We need to start paying people on performance, not on just sticking around, okay? If that, we're going to get serious about education, then let's, let's do it. And I applaud the girl that got up here. That took a lot of courage. And I'm here to tell you that I don't, I don't think that way. And that is a classic case of when you make a decision, you only factor in one part of the deal, okay? When they made this decision with masks, they asked medical professionals. Okay, well, that's a good start. What do you think they're going to say? Of course, they're going to say, yeah, it'll be safer without. But did we ask any psychologists, mental health experts, speech therapists, educational support people? Did they have a seat at the table? I don't think they did, okay? And her story right there, there's more people with that story, okay? And here's the thing. If a kid doesn't get COVID and die from COVID, but commits suicide, is that a win? No, it's not. You've got to look at the whole picture. And what we're doing to these kids is, is criminal. It really is. A kid is supposed to be a kid and enjoy it. And there is such a minimal risk for kids with this, and I can't believe that we can't figure that out, okay? I mean, there, there's stuff that's saying that seventy percent of the deer population has COVID. I don't, I've yet to see a deer with a mask on, okay? I mean, we, we could sit here and say, we're so intelligent. Well, go try to put a mask on a deer and see how that goes. If you want to wear it, that's fine. And if, if you really want to see what Dr. Fauci thought from May twenty-second of two thousand nineteen, doesn't matter. He was talking about tuberculosis, he was talking about Ebola, airborne transmissions. David Rubenstein specifically asked him, should you wear a mask? And he's like, no, no, that's paranoid stuff.
Bob, you're fine. Thank you. Jason. Go ahead, Dawn. No, Jason, no, Jason, she was, Jason, she's been standing there waiting, Jason. She was standing there waiting. Can you please let the woman speak? You are welcome, you are welcome to speak.
Hi, thanks. I'm Dawn Seedorf. I have three children in the district. I'm from Sagamore Hills and I will sign the log when I'm done here. I don't want to talk about masks. I think everyone's pretty tired of talking about masks. But I think we just need some reminders of where we are today with the masks and where we came from. So if we look at local data, four districts, there's about thirteen school districts in Summit County. Four of them started with mask mandates. Nordonia was one of the forward-thinking districts that started with mask mandates. If you look at the other districts within the county, within three weeks, six more districts had moved to mask requirements because of increases in cases, increases in quarantines, having to cancel games, and other disruption to staff and students in the schools. So now nearly all of Summit County's school districts are enforcing mask mandates. Nordonia and three other districts had the sense to predict what comes when contagious diseases are contagious. I think we can all agree on that. The other thing I wanted to address is it came up about the communication in July. I think the Delta variant is more contagious and more deadly, and that's what we found. And that news was not available to us until August. And when that became available was right about, just at the time that the parent survey went out. And so I just want to remind everyone that when that parent survey went out, this was emerging news. There was still a majority, a very slim majority, who wanted some sort of mask mandates. Now, you can't open, you know, a paper without seeing other districts that are moving to what we already had planned for. And we were proactive, not reactive. So I think if you polled the parents now, I know that, you know, it's hard for people to wear masks. I have a daughter on the spectrum. We spent all, she did remote learning all last year because she cannot wear a mask. She couldn't do it. But it did impact her socially. And I know that we don't have the same experience. Everyone has an individual experience and I respect that. But we worked with the teachers this year to find like a sort of a fidget way that we can address that because it is important for the kids to be in school. And that's what I want to remind people. These mask mandates are so that we can keep our doors open. And Nordonia has, and we have been successful. And so I thank you. Please continue staying the course. I thank you for prioritizing our students' health and safety and therefore our communities' health and safety. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
I want to apologize, I didn't realize you were here. My only thing I want to say is, is there's a lot of people here. Peyton, the young lady who came up here and that impassioned plea. Forget the, the sides of this. Dr. Clark, you are a very smart man with a PhD and author. Can we make a commitment as a community group here to find some way to help that young lady and any others in the community that are suffering like that? Forget the sides of that. I, I will, I don't know how I can help, but if there's some way that I can help you. Can we set a deadline by this Friday that we have come up with something? Maybe we could talk to other experts or other school districts that maybe have addressed this better? It's not, it's not an admission that we're a bad school district. Somebody slipped through the crack and they're screaming for help here. Dr. Clark, is that reasonable? Is that unreasonable? Is that not enough time? Is there something that I can do to help? I'll, I'll, I'll stick my neck out too. Could you respond to me, please, sir? We'll discuss it. Is there, is there anything anyone in the community can do to help you with that? Could Dr. Clark even shake his head? Chad, you got to talk for him. Dr. Clark, we've disagreed on stuff, but I have mostly supported you, but. I'm getting a response from Chad. All right, Julie.
My name's Lori Dos. I work at Lee Eaton Elementary. I'm in cafeteria there. And it, it's just pitiful that this has obviously become political. It is, it's so obvious tonight that this has just become political. And Dr. Clark, you did say, I do remember you saying that there's healing that needs to take place. I, I don't see how that can happen unless somehow we find the middle. Because we've got the far left and we've got the right, but there is a middle. There is a middle. We have to find that middle. I've heard about that student at Lee, at the high school. I've heard about that student. I was happy to meet her tonight and I am so glad she said something. I kind of can't believe that you couldn't, like, at least, I know you're not answering tonight and last time you didn't answer anything. But in the past, I've been to meetings where you guys did kind of give your feedback and it was kind of nice. I think you're supposed to give feedback. My brother, who was on the school board thirty or thirty years ago or so, he told me how it's usually, used to be run, and it's just gotten away from that. But I, I have to say, since I am up here, today at Lee Eaton Elementary, I was short one person. So I see your students and other students, anyone who has Lee Eaton students, they're in, in their masks. And I'm just simply, I was short one person, so we did a tally rather than the keypad. So all that simply means is that I'm out there alone. So instead of doing the keypad to save time, I'm telling the children, go, 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 go. And do you know those kids? Or it, it, it went by pretty quickly, but so many of them that were just looking so lethargic, they couldn't even tell what I'm saying. It was kind of frustrating to me because I was simply saying, thank you, go ahead, thank you, go ahead. It's so frustrating and it's so sad seeing them in those masks. My children, my grandkids are in the Copley School District in that school board meeting they had last week. And he said, they're doing fine. They're not going to do anything different. He doesn't see any reason. I think you know the fellow because he mentioned that he knew you. But he, he's not, they don't have to do anything different. The, the no mask is going fine. We went to a Brexwell volleyball game, they're not doing the mask. I just feel like it should be optional.
The volleyball game, we didn't have to.
Okay, well, there are other school districts that are. But I don't know why they let us come in the building then for the volleyball game. Well, I don't know. We went to the volleyball game, paid to get in, no ma, no masks. Where they didn't say anything, so I don't know. But I just, I do know there are other districts, maybe if I'm not naming them. But it's obviously gotten political. It's gotten political and I don't know how it got, everything's just turned upside down where things that are wrong is right. Science, you guys are, science teachers, you should help.
Go ahead, Julie.
All right, my name is Julie Moran. I usually don't speak at these kind of things because, well, I don't really. I must have just taken the microphone out. School board, thank you for the thankless job that you do. I, I know that it is hard being personally attacked. Joe Clark, same thing. Everybody else over here, like anybody who is involved. I just know me personally has also been attacked. And I want to come right now and tell you that I am one of the Friends of Nordonia. I am not shady. If I would have put, the interviews were from the PTA, none of every, anybody in Nordonia would have had any problems with that. I just thought, two years ago, the Friends of Nordonia brought this community together and we passed the levy. Sorry for the ones that who did not like the levy, but it brought the schools closer together. We were able to provide our students more educational and everything that can be imagined. I can't even imagine if we did not pass the levy. So I am, I apologize for those who did not approve the levy. But sorry, not sorry, but I'm glad that it did. So secondly, thank you for the, all of the school board members who are candidates for the school board. If you are here, please stand up. I want to get recognition. Everyone will be interviewed by the end of September thirtieth. All right, one, two, three, four, five. Everybody's here. Thank you. So please look for, and I am a parent. I have kids in the school district. Yes, I have three. So please, please, I do not want to see, oh, they haven't produced the video yet of all the interviews. I don't want to see that on September thirtieth at like midnight. I am a parent. I have kids that have sports. And quite frankly, I get tired at night. So I'm not a, a person who like is all video. I am just learning the GoPro for the first time. So it's not going to be produced like on September thirtieth. I'm just saying. And I am going to get everything in the entirety. Nothing's going to be cut out of the interview. Every school board member will receive all questions that received, you know, prior to. Everybody is getting the same questions. I just wanted to like say that. Secondly, we are not being, Friends of Nordonia is not endorsing any candidate. We are just providing the interview. We're going to upload it so all of the community can make their own decision based off of the interview. That's it. There's nothing else in there. There's no shadiness going on whatsoever. So all of that speaking stuff. If anybody has any questions, they can contact me. I'm not going to put out my number because this is going to be all over the internet. So everybody knows me. I have been involved in the community, PTA, sports, you name it. Whatever, I mean, just ask somebody here under this tent. They will be able to find me. Let's just say that, okay? So anyways, good luck to all of the, the board members who are like going for the candidacy. Best of luck. I can't wait to hear all of your platforms and go Nordonia.
All right. Now, is there anyone else who would like to speak? All right, we're going to move on to committee reports. Liz, do you want, do you have a committee report?
No, not tonight.
Judy?
Well, yes, I do. This, the Nordonia Foundation had their monthly meeting on September ninth of this year, and several things were discussed. First of all, there's building ambassadors, which is merely a liaison between the foundation and the school. Each of school, they send an individual who just gives a report. And the general consensus at that time is that all buildings were off to a great start with a lot of fun activities planned. There were no hiccups, there were no issues. One of the main focuses is Knights Carrying for Knights, which deals, their prime project right now is dealing with food insecurity. They have their own pantry and it still exists in the high school. And shout out to the volunteer PTA members who pick up bags for their schools to be distributed. And I do a task that God loves me. The community and school organizations have greatly contributed to this pantry, so there's no lack of food. And on the, no, food from the food bank in Afrid remains free because we're on the backpack program and there is still COVID money being invested in food for people who, who need it. Just to let you know too, there are snack bins throughout all the schools so that if a child is hungry or if it's, you know, a teacher or a guidance counselor notices them hungry, they are free to take it. There's things like, you know, crackers, cookies and so on and so forth to help them get through to the lunch period. As of that meeting, there were thirty-six bags were packed during the first week of school that went out to families who needed it, and they're anticipating more. We're hoping that there will be more sign-ups, that principals and guidance counselors... that principals and guidance counselors will, you know, submit the names so people will feel comfortable talking to them. Because I guarantee you in the five years, it's totally anonymous. Nobody identifies you as being food insecure because all we care about is that you have food. Last, the Business Expo is scheduled for November 13th from nine to four, four-thirty. That was canceled last year for obvious reasons. The mini grant emails had been sent out and hopefully they are getting their replies, the mini grants for the different pet projects of teachers. And on October 8th, they will start to be reviewed and be, and they'll be awarded. I think there's still a hope on the mega grant simply because the qualifications criteria is a lot of time intensive and they're going to wait to see how the mini grants go. The next foundation meeting is October 13th and it's really open to the public. And if anyone is interested in becoming a trustee, to please contact Nicole. That's it.
Amy?
No, it wasn't.
If you want to, go ahead.
Hello?
Hello.
For Mr. Veros, Dr. Brown, Mr. Brown, Dr. Clark, President Larmour and board members on Thursday, September 2nd. The CBC High School staff welcomed new students and their parents to the annual open house event. Many attended and visited program areas and had the opportunity to meet with their children's program instructor, academic teachers, guidance counselors and the administrators. Parents were also able to get a visual of their children's program areas and labs as well as see project students are currently working on. Teachers had the chance to explain to parents what will occur in their children's program this year and what the expectations for the program entail. CBC thanks all the parents and students who came to the high school open house. It was a great turnout. CBC looks forward to continuing another great school year. Due to the unexpected need for restaurant workers in the Nordonia Hills community, Ms. Deb Monaco, CBC career specialist that serves the Nordonia Hills district, has developed a food job fair. This event will take place this Thursday, September 30th from 10:00 AM to 12:30 during the students' lunch period in the school's courtyard. The job fair is open to all students at the high school with some companies hiring individuals as young as fifteen years old. Candidates are able to meet with employers, apply for jobs and interview on site. The following employers are set to attend this event. Kentucky Fried Chicken, McDonald's, Chipotle, Penn Station, Dunkin', Raising Canes, Pizza Hut, Chick-fil-A and Panera Bread as of this time. The annual Reese Across America Project is underway. Cogga Valley Career Center's power equipment technology, construction trades and education professions. Students are joining the cause to ensure that all veterans at the Ohio Western Reserve Cemetery are honored. From now until Tuesday, November 30th, CBCC students from the power equipment technology programs are using this opportunity as a self, as a service learning project, gathering re-sponsorships as a way to honor those who have served. Each re-sponsorship costs fifteen dollars. Contact Cogga Valley Career Center for more information. Our next board meeting at the CBCC is this Thursday at 6:30 PM. And this concludes my report. Thank you.
All right. I don't have any committee reports, so we are going to move on to superintendents.
All right. Item one, I recommend you approve the consent items listed.
I'll motion. I'll second.
Okay, these are the first readings of several new board policies and one, I'm sorry, several revised board policies and one new board policy. There's also some donations here. I've never ceased to be amazed by the generosity of our community. You'll see donations from Justin's, from Luke Choi, from University Hospital, from Sintas and from the Emergency Assistance Center.
Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, can you explain the change to the public participation in board meetings? I was trying to read that. I didn't follow what was being changed.
Yeah, interestingly, throughout the state of Ohio, there are very heated board meetings going on. And what's happening at some of the board meetings is that the public is coming in, making personal attacks on board members, superintendents or whoever it might be. Some school districts have tried to discourage that by saying that you can't speak about those things. And there was a lawsuit which showed that in fact, we cannot control the content of what people want to speak about unless it's hate speech or whatnot. So the revised policy for public participation actually gives more latitude for the public to speak at board meetings. It does, of course, keep, keep language in or adds language saying, you know, if what you say is causing, is so incendiary that it's going to cause violence, you can't say it. If it's hate speech, you can't say it. But generally, it gives a lot more latitude to the public coming to school board meetings. And so that was sent out to Pepel and Wagner clients to change that update.
Anyone else? Mr. Brown, call the roll, please.
Mr. Bussie?
Yeah.
Mr. Larmour?
Yes.
Ms. Matlin?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley?
Yes.
Mrs. Strong?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item two is a recommendation to approve the student academic consumable fees, which are corrections.
I'll motion. I'll second.
These are corrections to what you had previously approved.
Go ahead and call the roll.
Mr. Bussie?
Yeah.
Mr. Larmour?
Yes.
Ms. Matlin?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley?
Yes.
Mrs. Strong?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item three is a recommendation to approve the personnel items listed.
I'll motion. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
This is a typical September agenda, lots of things like detention monitoring, some substitutes, some home tutoring, that sort of thing. There's nothing really unusual about that portion of the personnel agenda.
I have a question.
Okay.
Just the regular rate of thirty dollars twenty biceps per hour. How is that calculated?
That is point zero zero seven percent of the bachelor's zero step on the teacher salary.
Okay, so that's for everybody regardless. Point zero zero seven?
Point zero zero seven percent of their bachelor's zero rate. So it goes up, well, it would have gone up three percent from last year.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Go ahead and call the roll, please.
Mr. Bussie?
Yeah.
Mr. Larmour?
Yes.
Ms. Matlin?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley?
Yes.
Mrs. Strong?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. And item four is a recommendation to approve the personnel items listed.
I'll make the motion. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, there was some, a community comment earlier today that would lead one to believe that this is very sinister or cynical, and that's not the case at all. Of course, any school administrator in any, in a district in Ohio, you are permitted as a district to renew their contract starting in January of the year before that contract expires. That's typically something we do. And it's something that sort of got away from me because, believe it or not, we were busy with lots of other things this spring. And the reason they do that is because of this. School administrators do not have tenure. They do not have guaranteed reemployment. So when their contract expires, you know, they're either renewed or they're done. And typically, you begin to see school administrator jobs posted come January or February. So a good rule of thumb for any school administrator is you never go into a school year with only one year left on your contract. That is generally a red flag and that causes you to go look for other jobs because you don't want to, you know, wait until March or April or May to see if a board is going to renew your contract and skip out on other jobs. And so this would, this would typically be done in the January board meeting. Again, it slipped my mind. I, I plead guilt on that. And it is unusual because this is the first time I'm recommending four-year contracts for administrators. And this is the reason I'm doing that. Typically, I give new administrators a two-year contract and then they get three-year contracts every time they, they get renewed. What we're finding is there's an incredible lack of labor in the education market, especially in the administrator labor market. And I happen to believe and will defend any of our administrative team to anyone in the world. It is the best administrative team, in my opinion, in the state of Ohio. And this district is, and community is lucky to have them. Therefore, I want to reward them by offering them a four-year contract and help them remain part of my team.
Go ahead, Julie.
I, Joe, I just want to clarify something because maybe people don't realize it. This four-year contract is merely our commitment to them, their commitment to us, but it has in no way, shape or form an automatic pay increase. So the new board would get to negotiate the pay when that
That's correct.
old contract is up.
Correct. When we do, when we do administrators contracts, you're just extending the term or the length of the contract. Now, these administrators, we know that this board is already committed to giving them fifty percent of whatever the teachers' rates was. So we know that they're getting a one percent raise next year. But after that, that would need to be negotiated by whoever the board is at that time. Well, not really negotiated. The teachers don't have, the principals, administrators don't have a union. It's really me making a recommendation to the board and the board either accepting it or coming back with some other rate.
I still am concerned with the four-year contract because we've never done four-year contracts. Historically, we've done two and then we've gone to three. Classified and certified staff only have three-year contracts. I'm not questioning our administrators at all. I'm just, I don't agree with going to four-year contract. If it was a three-year contract, I have no problem with that.
Bill, Liz?
When I look at the responsibilities of an administrator, you, they are, if they're a principal, they're overseeing buildings. They're overseeing multiple teachers. When something has to be taken care of, regardless of how small or how large, that's where it goes to. Mrs. Strong is right in classified and certified staff have three-year contracts. As you climb the totem pole, educators can choose to become administrators. And climbing that pole, I don't see a problem offering a four-year contract. I've seen it done other places, so it has not happened here in Nordonia to this point. But these administrators that we are looking at doing this for have proven themselves. And they have been here for quite a while and they have repeatedly proven themselves. That's my fact.
My only problem with this four-year contract is that it's only four years. I wish it were five. I think our administrative staff is fantastic. They're always available. They always are answering questions, are always giving us updates whenever we need it. Anything happens, it doesn't matter if it's eleven o'clock at night. We're getting text messages from Mr. Eckerold telling us something happened at an athletic event. I think they're fantastic. I don't want them to go anywhere. There is a labor shortage in the administration realm and I would like to lock them into our district as long as I possibly can. So that's all I have to say. Mr. Brown?
Mr. Bussie?
Yeah.
Mr. Larmour?
Yes.
Ms. Matlin?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley?
Yes.
Mrs. Strong?
No.
Motion carries three two. And that concludes my report.
All right, Mr. Brown, it is over to you.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I want to start with item number one, which is the approval of the consent items. I recommend for approval.
I'll motion. Sorry, Julie, second.
What we have in here is the approval of the special board meeting from August 19th, 2021, special board meeting minutes from August 30th, 2021, and the regular board meeting minutes of August 30th, 2021. We also have the financial statements for August 2021. And if I can give a brief update on how that ended. Overall, for the receipts, we are ahead from the same time last year by nineteen point nine percent. So that's showing a year-to-date revenue through August 2021 of just over eighteen point five million compared to fifteen point five million last year. The most significant indicator that's driving that is our property taxes. We've received three settlements through August. We've also received three settlements at the same time last year. What it's looking like to shape out for this year is we don't get the final settlement until September, but that has come in. And so even though this is significantly higher when you compare the two time periods, as, as we look at through this all the way to September, when we get the final settlement, it'll be a pretty relative. It's just on the timing of when the county distributes the taxes that they collect. The other issue too, on the revenue side that's driving the increase, has to deal with the all other revenues line item. And as I mentioned in the previous board meeting last, last month, kindergarten fees are higher at this point where they were last year. And we, we also have received some additional tax settlements that have come in, that did not come in last year at this time. So those are the, the main indicators that are driving property, the receipts higher for this year. On the expenditure side, we are showing a decrease of expenditures of ten point six percent. So for August, through August 2021, we're showing seven point nine million in expenditures compared to eight point eight million last year at the same timeframe. Some of the big indicators on that, on that front is the employee benefits line item. Each year, the board is giving out premium holidays. When you look at when those premium holidays were given out last year compared to the same time this year, last years were given out in August and September. This year, we gave them out in July and August. So therefore, there's about a month difference in premium holidays, which equates to about five hundred thousand dollars for the district. So that's why there's a significant decrease in, in the employee benefits line item. On the purchase services line item, again, as I stated in July, a pretty similar issue. It comes down to the timing of when bills are paid. Particularly our preschool bill was paid last year in August. This year, we paid it in September. So that is explaining that variance. So hopefully, you know, as, as the timing of bills gets worked out and those numbers will, will show a little bit more comparative, comparative variance that we can explain month over month. So to end the month, year-to-date, we're showing a net income of ten point six million. And our unencumbered, unreserved fund balance is at sixteen point six million when you compare that to last year at thirteen point two million. Any questions?
No. Anyone else? Go ahead and call the roll.
Mr. Bussie? Mr. Larmour?
Yes.
Ms. Matlin?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley?
Yes.
Mrs. Strong?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item number two is a resolution to approve the designation of our depositories of public monies and I recommend for approval.
I'll motion. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
And what this is, this, we have to do this every five years. It's a procedural resolution as directed by Ohio Revised Code. Basically, this is designating our banks that we can do business with for the next five years.
Go ahead and call the roll.
Mr. Bussie?
Yes.
Mr. Larmour?
Yes.
Ms. Matlin?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley?
Yes.
Mrs. Strong?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item number three is a resolution to approve the fund transfer and I recommend for approval.
I'll motion. I'll second.
This is just a intra-fund transfer between the high school weightlifting fund to the general high school athletics fund for forty-two dollars and forty-five cents. The athletic director has indicated that this fund has had no activity for a number of years and would like to transfer those funds back to the main athletic account.
Go ahead and call the roll, please. Go ahead and call the roll, please.
Mr. Bussie.
Yeah.
Mr. Larmour.
Yes.
Ms. Matlin.
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley.
Yes.
Mrs. Strong.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0. Item number four is a resolution to approve the revised statements of purpose and budget for student activity funds, and I recommend for approval.
I'll motion.
I'll second.
There's five student activity funds that have put in revisions for their budgets.
Anyone have any questions? Go ahead, Matt.
Mr. Bussie.
Yeah.
Mr. Larmour.
Yes.
Ms. Matlin.
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley.
Yes.
Mrs. Strong.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0. Item number five is a resolution to approve the district's fiscal year 2021, '22 permanent appropriations, and I recommend for approval.
I'll motion.
I'll second.
And if I may just give a brief overview of what that looks like as we enter in through the new school year with our appropriations. Just so you are aware, the way it works in school districts across the state of Ohio, typically, they pass a temporary appropriations in June to basically fund the first three months of the school year, which would be July, August, and September. Then, under state law, by October 1st, the Board of Education is required to pass a permanent appropriations, and that's what this measure is doing. The general fund appropriation that I'm proposing is $53,272,920, boy, I'm really messing that one up. Too many digits. Overall, the total appropriations for the whole district is $63,541,653. When you compare that, and one cent, sorry. Thank you, Dr. Clark, clarifying that. The original appropriations, when you compare that to the same time last year, what we did was $53.8 million. So we have a decrease in our appropriations of just under 1%. Some of the things that are driving that decrease are, if you recall, in our past meetings, we've talked about utilizing our ESER funding for different purposes. Well, we have earmarked $1.8 million of our ESER funding for staff tied to social emotional learning, our psychologists, counselors, community interventionists. So those monies have historically been in the general fund, but because of this funding through the COVID relief package, we have moved those monies for this fiscal year into the ESER funds, and that will be utilizing those for that purpose. It is important to point out that 69.12% of this budget is earmarked for instructional and pupil-related support services. Personnel costs, which would include our salaries and benefits, is 72.16% of the appropriations. The next largest line item is our purchase services, which is 19.65% of our total appropriations. On the revenue, on the receipt side, projecting $51,536,705. And the biggest change, when you compare that to prior, and that's a .35% decrease when you compare that estimate to last year's actual numbers. Biggest change is the BWC premium dividend that was given out to all public employers last year. For Nordonia, that equated to $484,000. That money did not come in, or we are not anticipating that for this year. That was a one-and-done type of deal that the BWC gave out. The other thing that I'd like to point out is a reduction in state funding. This is mainly driven by the change in state funding that was passed in the most recent state budget bill. That was a highly debated budget bill, and overall, it is very beneficial for public education. For us, it did not impact a significant growth because we are a guaranteed school district. However, the decrease in revenues is offset by the decrease in expenditures. So really, it's a net impact when you look at it from both sides of the ledger there. The other big-ticket items in this appropriation are our debt service fund, our ESER funds, and really, our food service funds are the big-ticket items that are part of this budget. So I take any questions if there are any.
I don't have any. Is anyone else? You see a lot of head shake, go ahead and follow along.
Okay. Mr. Bussie.
Yeah.
Mr. Larmour.
Yes.
Ms. Matlin.
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley.
Yes.
Mrs. Strong.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0. And then finally, item number six is a resolution to approve a then-and-now certification, and I recommend for approval.
I'll motion.
I'll second.
And as you are aware of the board, anytime there is a order or an invoice that we receive without a purchase order in place prior to that, and it's over $3,000, we need board approval before we pay that. And that is what this is taking care of.
Any other questions?
Yeah, the reason that previous student-staff volunteering commitments did not come to fruition, and consequently, put more of the work on the vendor to complete the job in the timeframe provided. So that means that somebody else completed that mural, or... Does anyone know?
Not Matt.
Not Matt.
Hi, Tim.
Hi.
So the, my good friend, the graduating class, last year's graduating class, it was on the mural, it was a real difficult process. We had budgeted that project with the muralists, not hiring out this helper, and we ran into a lot of challenges with COVID, and they graduated, and we think about the country was college, that while their previous commitments were funded enough, their availability was much different. We don't fault them for that, but unfortunately, we came out to it. The muralists, we had to finish the project on COVID's movement, so we ended up having to pay for that.
Thanks, Matt. It's very nice.
The mural looks good.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
Anyone else? Go ahead and call the roll, please.
Mr. Bussie.
Yeah.
Mr. Larmour.
Yes.
Ms. Matlin.
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley.
Yes.
Mrs. Strong.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0. That concludes my report.
All right. The next regular board meeting will be Monday, October 25th at 7:00 p.m. Hopefully, we're back in Northfield Elementary School, and I get a motion to adjourn.
Before we give that motion, did I make a proposal right now? Would everyone please join me in wishing Dr. Clark a very happy birthday since it is tonight? Thank you, guys.
Now, can we give a motion, please, Jim?
Yes.
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Bussie.
Yeah.
Mr. Larmour.
Yes.
Ms. Matlin.
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley.
Yes.
Mrs. Strong.
Yes.
Motion carries.